Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The regular village council meeting will come to order. This is our June 26, 2023, regular village council meeting. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're able, please stand. Okay, Madam Clerk, do you want to call a roll?
Commissioner Maxim.
Here.
Commissioner Nero.
Here.
Commissioner Melon Rogovin.
Here.
Commissioner Vogt.
Here.
Mayor Hoskins.
Here. Okay, approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the June 12 village council meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, it's been moved by Commissioner Maxim. Is there a second?
All seconds.
Thank you, it's been seconded by Commissioner Melon Rogovin. Discussion? Okay, there's no discussion, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Melon Rogovin.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
I've seen.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye. Okay, next, is there a motion to approve the June 12 closed session meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, it's been moved by Commissioner Maxim. Is there a second?
Nero, second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Nero. Discussion? Okay, there's no discussion, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Melon Rogovin.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
I've seen.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye. Okay, we're in public comment?
I have one public comment that was emailed to me from Chris McCoy. They said, "I would like to voice my support for installing an EV charger in Forest Park. I've owned an electric car for two years, and I find that knowing where there are chargers available for public use heavily influences where I shop and dine. Being able to charge while running errands, having dinner, or buying a new pair of shoes is a win-win. Oak Park, the Oakbrook Mall, and the Outlet Mall in Aurora all have chargers available", just to name a few. "Adding this amenity to Forest Park's downtown area would make a fun destination even more enticing for EV drivers, whose numbers are growing by leaps and bounds." Chris McCoy.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, I don't see any formal communications in front of us tonight. We have one, a department report that was included in your packet from the Fire Department. Any discussion or feedback on the Fire Department report? Commissioner Maxim.
I just want to say to Chief DePatta, thank you for including photos of me, and thank you again for taking me to the burn tower. It was a real honor and a pleasure.
Okay. Okay, next up, bills by resolution. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready.
They have resolved by the Council of the Village of Forest Park, Cook County, Illinois, that we dispense with the reading of the individual bills, inasmuch as each department had his approved and signed bills, in the following aggregate amount for the respective departments. Refunds and allocations, $3,530.40. Public affairs, $34,653.49. Police department, $3,872.23. Community center, $320.40. Council Finance Clerk's office, $21,948.97. Council Finance Fire Department, $684.26. Department of Health and Safety, $2,438.54. Streets and Public Improvements, $103,914.63. Public property, $20,930.48. Seizure, $1,293.99. Federal Customs, $8,323.3. TIP, $459,649.79. VIP, $370,474.41. Water Department, $743,151.17, for a total of $1,775,185.79.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, is there a motion to adopt a resolution on the bills?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, it's been moved by Commissioner Maxim. Is there a second?
Nero, second.
It's been taken by Commissioner Nero. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Melon Rogovin.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye.
This is Resolution R-50-23.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, there is no unfinished business before the council tonight, so moving to new business, the first item is a presentation from Purely Meats Cold Storage and Warehousing, LLC, who will present their request for the village council's endorsement of the 6B tax classification.
This is on? I'm loud, so it should be on. So Chris, I'll have you present from there.
Okay.
So for the council's review, and those watching, and those in the audience, in the packet tonight is a memo regarding who we have here joining us tonight, representatives from Purely Cold Storage and Warehousing. They are the business and property owners of 7500 Industrial Drive, Mirabel Musalami, Chris Kentra, and Diego Ledesma. They're here to talk about their business, to introduce themselves to you, to talk about their plans, what they have been doing at the site. Ultimately, they are seeking village council endorsement of a 6B application that they will be filing with the Assessor's Office. The memo kind of explains the short history of them being in town, recent purchase of a property, but Chris, at this time, I'm just going to turn it over to you, just to kind of present, you know, who you are, what you're doing, and again, welcome to Forest Park.
Thank you, Moses. Good evening, everyone. I'm Chris Kentra. I'm outside council for Purely Meats. This is Mirabel Musalami. She is the...
I'll just say really quick. First, very happy, excited to move to Forest Park. Actually, I'm born and raised in East Los Angeles, California. Moved out here after my husband said it was nice and warm, actually. But started up a meat company 12 years ago as a part-time job, and I'm very happy to say it's been very successful, and it has grown quite a bit. We went from $250,000 to this year it will be at $62 million in sales, and because of that, we need a bigger facility and are very happy to move out here in Forest Park, and 6B will help us a lot. We have a lot of people that count on us. Went from two people to 70 people, and are hoping to grow our staff even more by moving out this year.
I think it's important to note that Mirabel is the president of Purely, and it is a minority-owned and woman-owned certified business. It's really a great story. You know, I'm fortunate enough to say that I've been representing the company since it started. This is a substantial undertaking for the company. The property that they purchased, they bought the property at a time when it was pretty expensive, the rates were high. They had to pivot on their business model when COVID hit because the restaurant business went down so far. They're able to survive that and get through that, but the amount of money they spent for the building and the current margins in the meat business, this is really a necessity. They really can't operate their business and complete their business plan to expand and become a partner and a really productive piece of Forest Park if not able to obtain this designation. It's a substantial tax savings for a long period of time for the business, and it comes at a really important time because the building was $2.75 million, and we're in the process of contributing a couple million dollars improvements in the building to try to build it out and scale up this business for Mirabel. So it's really, I think, a really great story and could be a really, really good addition to Forest Park because Purely is, they're just great people. I'm really proud of them. So if you have any questions, we can answer specific questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Maxim.
Can you talk a little bit about the retail aspect? I know it says in here that you provide to steak houses but also residences. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, during COVID, we had to pivot in our business and started selling, doing home delivery. So we don't have a retail storefront. What people do is they can buy online and we deliver to their homes.
I'm not sure if we included your website question, but they did.
Any other questions, Commissioners? All right, well, Ms. Musalami and council, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for having us.
And also, welcome to Forest Park. Okay, next, we have a presentation from Concerned Van Buren Citizens on behalf of the Grove Midrise Condominium Association.
My name is Gene Armstrong. I live at 7753 Van Buren, number 516 in Forest Park. I am the chairman of Concerned Van Buren Citizens. I'm also the president of the Grove Midrise Condominium Association and a member of the Grove Community Association Board. Concerned Van Buren Citizens is a commission designated by the Grove Midrise Condominium Association to represent Grove residents in matters pertaining to future uses of the Altenheim property. More information about our commission is included in our written presentation, which has already been provided to you. On behalf of the residents of the Grove, we thank the board for this opportunity to present views related to the final report of the Altenheim Advisory Committee. Our views are informed by the results of our survey of all Grove residents. 114 responses we received represent a 62% return rate. Our support and our opposition to elements of the final report are consistent with and reflect the survey responses. Our written presentation has been provided. We ask that it be included in the public record. I wish to note that Concerned Van Buren Citizen leadership attended all public meetings of the Advisory Committee. A quick summary of our position with respect to the final report. We support most of the recommendations. We have reservations about some of the representations. I'll speak first to the recommendations. We endorse and support the recommendation that a substantial portion of the purchased parcel be committed to open space, that development on the purchased property be limited to low-density residential. We support the effort to avoid further traffic congestion on Van Buren. We are pleased that the committee recommended the village honor the covenants in the purchase agreement and that they honor the restrictions in the building demolition grant. We are pleased that the report expresses a concern that anything that happens there protect the neighbor's right to quiet enjoyment of their homes, this implied not only to the Altenheim Senior Living Facility but also the Grove community. We are supportive of the representations that recommend passive recreation uses on the purchased parcel. We are sympathetic to the possibility of transit-oriented development. We also are sympathetic and appreciate the committee's report that said new residential should be compatible with neighboring developments. We appreciate they brought attention to the need for stormwater management and parking management. We also are supportive of suggestions that would place the residential development on the west side of the purchased parcel. We are not supportive of the recommendation or the suggestion that commercial development be allowed on the purchased parcel. We are not supportive of any notion that the open space be committed to active recreation, basketball courts, soccer fields, softball diamonds, tennis courts. We are not supportive of the notion that the development itself should fund the establishment and maintenance of the open space. This, we believe, should be a public open space, and we would support the use of public funds to establish and maintain that open space. We are not supportive of the notion that the developer should be responsible for future park maintenance. Again, this is public space, a public entity should be responsible for maintenance. We are not supportive of the notion that higher-density residential development could be allowed, especially in the south and the southeast portions of the property. And we are a little concerned about the suggestion throughout the report that the village should try to figure out what the developer wants. We are more supportive of the notion that that's how the village aim for what the village wants. I'll now turn to representations. At the bottom of page two and the top of page three of the report, it states, and I quote, "The committee engaged in discussions with major stakeholders, including members of committees from neighboring residences and advocates for public uses. None of the participants in such discussions is named. None of the participants appeared at any public meeting to discuss with the committee members the future uses of the Altenheim property. We don't know when or where such discussions occurred. I would note that the Illinois Open Meetings Act does apply. In respect to discussions with members of committees from neighboring residences, I can say with certainty that the committee held no discussions with members of a committee from the Grove. In fact, neither Muse nor the committee even contacted the board of the Grove Midrise Condominium Association, the board of the Grove Community Association, the board of the Grove Townhome Association, or the leaders of Concerned Van Buren Citizens. I also seriously doubt that they had discussions with members of a committee of residents from the townhomes at 7771 Van Buren, as I don't believe there is such a committee, or with members of a committee of residents from the Altenheim Senior Living Facility, as I also don't believe such a committee exists. I conclude that there were no such discussions with members of committee from neighboring residences, at least none from those that are most likely to be most affected by the future uses of the property, the Grove, 7771 Townhomes, and the Altenheim Senior Living Facility. I feel it's important to report that the Concerned Van Buren Citizens Committee asked to make a presentation to the Advisory Committee. I was allowed three minutes to speak. I answered two or three clarifying questions posed by members of the committee. There was no discussion that involved members of Concerned Van Buren Citizens. I respectfully suggest that my three-minute speech was not a discussion with the committee. I now want to speak to the plot plans that were attached to the final report. The attached plot plans, along with different plot plans, were discussed. We heard no committee member suggest that these two plot plans, quote, "incorporate the committee's goals and visions for the property," end quote. That appears in the middle of page one of the final report. We see these plot plans as a contradiction to the recommendations clearly stated throughout the final report, use of the property for open space and low-density residential. Close inspection of the plot plans that depict less intensive development does show low-density residential, but it shows virtually residential from property line to property line of the purchased parcel. Open space on purchased parcel, such as it is, is relegated to walkways within the residential development and a narrow strip along eastern boundary. Green space shown at the southeast corner is not space on the purchased property, the property that is subject to the purchase agreement and the demolition grant. It is on property the village already owns. This is also true of the green space provided at the north end. The triangle is also property the village already owns, and it is not subject to the use restrictions the committee strongly urges the village to honor. To honor these commitments means substantial portions of the purchased property must be devoted to open space. Close inspection of the plot plan that depicts a more intense development is worse. The skimpy open space along eastern boundary is eliminated. Midrise multifamily dominates this space. This is an even greater deviation from the terms of the purchase agreement and the demolition grant. On behalf of the residents of the Grove, the Concerned Van Buren Citizens urge the Commissioners to disavow these two plot plans. Thank you very much. I'm available for questions about my comments or about the written report that we have provided.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Okay, Commissioners, the next item on tonight's agenda is a presentation by Mr. Phil McKenna of Ryan LLC and village attorney Brian Ball to discuss the potential reestablishment of the village's Brown Street TIP.
Good evening, I'm Phil McKenna. How are you? I think actually the memo that Moses put together pretty much states what the situation is. The village has an existing Brown Street Station TIP district, which is set to expire at the end of this year. Village is also facing a major financial burden in terms of the viaduct project. One of the things that's done in that situation is to seek a 12-year extension of the 23-year life of the TIP. Village went through that process, but due to some delays in getting favorable, all taxing districts must sign off. All taxing districts did sign off, but the timing with the legislature wasn't such that it could be done during that session. The timing with respect to the fall is that even if that went through in the fall, there still would not be time to get the extension done before the end of the year. So talking with Moses and with Brian Ball, the alternative that we posed was do a downsized version of the existing Brown Street TIP district, in particular, take out just about any residential that's been developed in there, and focus on the viaduct intersection as well as some properties coming a little bit further south down in Harlem. This would enable a couple things. First, the amount of money that the taxing districts would receive annually as a result of that reconfiguration would be substantial. I think, I'm just looking down at Moses' number, I think, for example, school district 91 would receive about $272,000 additionally each year as a result of that reconfiguration. Additionally, this doesn't even include what we term recovered value. Recovered value is the fact that not only do they get the TIP funds each year, but there's also a computation that says that as a result of the new base year, they're going to get even more funds than that. So we think it would be a win-win situation. Actually, in our estimation, the taxing districts will receive more funds through this method than they would if you did a 12-year extension. So I don't think it's been presented formally to the taxing districts yet, but wanted to present it to the council at this time. It is somewhat time-sensitive because of the way this needs to be structured, and what would happen essentially is a new TIP district would be established. It'd be a smaller TIP district. It'd be focused on that viaduct. There are funds available in the existing Brown Street Station TIP district, which could be ported over to the new TIP district for purposes of using it for that viaduct in particular, but also for purposes of encouraging some additional development. The timing with respect to that is like juggling three balls at once, and the timing gets down to we have to have it done before the end of the year in December, so it really means holding a public hearing, having a joint review board going through the process in October, November to be able to get that done. So what's before you tonight, as I understand it, is a proposal from Ryan. Just to be clear, I'm Phil McKenna, Kane McKenna Associates. We've been long-term, 30-plus years with the village. I sold the company to Ryan back in December. I'm still full-time. I go to all the night meetings as an independent consultant, so technically, it's Ryan that would be on the proposal, but I can assure you it would be me that would be responsible for that activity. So the proposal outlines what the services would be and what the fees would be for those services, and we would work in consort with the village board and with Moses and Brian to get this done.
So Commissioners, we have before us a resolution on the next agenda item on the topic that Phil McKenna has talked about, but do you have any questions for Phil while he's here? Commissioner Maxim will be up.
Yeah. Which were the taxing bodies you were having trouble getting approval from for the extension?
My understanding is that none of them were problematic in terms of, none of them were against it. It was just a question of getting their respective board to pass out. I'm not sure, Mayor, if you want to address that?
People were supportive of the extension. The timing's just not going to work for us, that's all. No one refused to support the extension.
I guess my concern, if I can, is how do we know that we're not going to have this same kind of problem again and not meet a deadline again?
Well, no one is objecting to, no one objected to the extension, so presumably no one would object to establishment of new TIP, especially if it's not going to take as much money, right, from their budgets, whether it's the high school district or the elementary school district or the park district or Triton. We have no reason to think that they won't call.
I'm not opposed to it at all. I just, you know, it's a concern that we let this, we miss the deadline for the extension in the first place. That concerns me. I just want to make sure we get it done on time.
Just to clarify, the deadline was a state imposed deadline in terms of the state legislature. I would also point out, part of this process is what's termed a joint review board, which is various taxing districts get together, they have full access to the redevelopment plan, to all the aspects with respect to it. They can meet as many times as they want and deliver a report to the village board. So they have a full ability to comment on any parts of this that they want through the process.
And council, want to add something? Brian?
And just to expand on that, the 12-year extension is a very unique situation where you need the approval of all the taxing districts. The TIP district itself, through the JRB process, it's just a simple majority of whatever taxing districts show up for that meeting, so you don't need, you know, the approval of all the taxing districts to move forward with the establishment of a new TIP district.
Commissioners, any other questions for either Phil or council? All right, Phil, thank you. Moses, do you want to add anything?
I just want to reiterate what Phil had mentioned. We did have to pivot, but for the taxing bodies, this is substantial dollars that if we go this route, that they will start realizing immediately versus if we did do an extension, what would be available to taxing dollars is nowhere near what I have in this memo here. So, you know, that's something that did come up in our discussions with the school districts because obviously, you know, for a period of 23 years, monies are, incremental monies are diverted from the taxing bodies into the TIP. are diverted from the taxing bodies into the Tiff fund. By recreating the Tiff, the new base year of what the value of the area is going to be is going to be 2023 or 2024. Right now, that base year is the year 2000. So, as Phil indicated, you know, just for like D-91, we're figuring an extra $272,000 plus a year. That actually, that number is actually low, we believe, because in the new Tiff, I'm taking out residential units, and that's the full value. So, that number of everything that I have here includes the Tiff today as the map exists. But by carving out developments that do contain residential, and there's four townhome buildings on Brown and one on Circle that I'm proposing not to have included in the Tiff, they'll realize that full value. So, yeah, we did have to pivot because of timing reasons, but I think in the long run, you know, I think as Phil said, this could be a win-win for everybody. But yes, you know, out of courtesy, I am going to be engaging D-91, 209 in our Park district shortly to talk about this concept. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, next item is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a consulting agreement with, my glasses, with the dendum by the village of Forest Park and Ryan LLC, formerly known as Kane McKenna and Associates regarding the study evaluation of certain areas within the village located at or near the Harlem and Circle Avenue in regard to potential Tiff district. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Maxam. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Melanor Goven. Discussion?
I think this has a very advantageous financial impact for the village and for our partners in the village.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything further, Commissioners? Madam Clerk, were you ready?
Commissioner Maxam?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanor Goven?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
This is Resolution R-51-23.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, next item is a res-
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Before we move on, I just wanted to circle back because we had three presentations, but we didn't get to really discuss, or I had a comment about the Altenheim presented, presentation. Can I just add something really quick?
You mean you want something to go into our record?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Please.
So, I just wanted to comment, going back to the Altenheim Advisory Committee and the Concerned Citizens of Altenheim Advisory Board, and I just wanted to make the observation that especially in the, in the report that we received about the Altenheim Advisory Committee meeting records, the meeting minutes, there's a summary of the meeting minutes on the website, but any other detailed meeting minutes, I thought that was a good observation to be on the website as part of being a new, new person to this process, that it would be advantageous to have more public information, and I thought some of the observations that were raised in the discussion.
I'm aware of what's on the website.
No, no, I'm-
Whoa, 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 Ms. Rossstrom.
I'm suppo-
You had your minutes.
I'm supporting, I'm supporting the observation that having the, the, the public participation and the, the minutes of the public participation of the Altenheim Advisory Committee be included on the website, if there's any missing information, it would be helpful, I think, to flesh out the summaries if, if there's any additional information, I think that would be helpful. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, Commissioners, let's see. Commissioners, next item is a resolution approving the pay request number one for the 15th Street Sewer Separation Project. This is a CBVG project from 2017, 2018 with John Neri Construction. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I thought we didn't. Oh, we didn't. We started the-
The Kane McKenna, yes.
We should have the Kane McKenna, yes.
We did, yeah.
Yeah, we did. I wouldn't have interrupted if we hadn't. I'm sorry.
Would you like to trade? We can trade places if you want. Okay, resolution approving pay request number one for the 15th Street Sewer Separation Project. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Melanor Goven, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Vogt. Discussion?
No discussion.
Okay, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxam?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanor Goven?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero is fully aware that I don't have my glasses, but I do have the ability to mark a letter out.
That was Resolution R-52-23.
More levity. All right, Commissioners, next item is a resolution approving the pay request number one for the 2023 alley improvement project. This is with Narduli Construction. Is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Melanor Goven. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Vogt. Discussion? Okay, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxam?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanor Goven?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
This is Resolution R-53-23.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, the next item is a resolution authorizing the execution of pay request number three for the 2023 water main project, water main project to Uno Construction. This is for Wilcox and Ferdinand. Is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Melanor Goven. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Vogt. Discussion? There's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxam?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanor Goven?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
This is Resolution R-54-23.
Commissioners, next item is a resolution authorizing the execution of pay request number two for the rehabilitation of the water tower, water tank at 7435 Franklin. This is to T Corp. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Vogt. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Melanor Goven. Discussion? There's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxam?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanor Goven?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
This is Resolution R-55-23.
Commissioners, next item is a resolution authorizing the execution of a public consulting group emergency services agreement between the village and Public Consulting Group, Inc. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Maxam. Is there a second?
Nero, second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Nero. Discussion? Okay, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxam?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanor Goven?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
This is Resolution R-56-23.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, the next item is a resolution authorizing the acceptance and execution of Illinois Department of Transportation Sustained Traffic Enforcement Program Grant for High Visibility Enforcement for fiscal year 2024. Is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Melanor Goven. Is there a second?
Nero, second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Nero. Discussion?
Just want to congratulate Chief Growth and the Police Department for a very exciting grant to initiate or to have a specific traffic enforcement program. This is an exciting grant for, yeah, traffic enforcement at specific times of the year. I'm really excited about it. Yeah, it's really cool.
Thank you, Commissioner Melanor Goven. Commissioners, is there any further discussion? Okay, there's none. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxam?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanor Goven?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
This is Resolution R-57-23.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, the next item is an ordinance amending section 6-4-4 and 6-5-10, Chapter 5, Title 6 of the municipal code regarding designated parking permit lots and parking permit fees. This is an update. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Maxam. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Vogt. Discussion?
I have a question or a point to bring up. I know that I have had residents come to me about parking permits, especially at night, and not being able to find parking in available lots, and I was confused when I read this about the number of parking lots available for parking permits, and I know that we're talking about the rates, but I just, I think we can pursue this, but I think it would be great to look at that question and work on that question and to turn, to look at the number of night permit parking, number of parking permits, and then the number of available parking spaces. So, I would love to pursue that with whoever I can do that with. So, just putting it out there that I think it's something that we can address, I hope. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Melanor Goven. Commissioners, any further discussion or questions? So, I think I know what Commissioner Melanor Goven is talking about. You know, over the years, people sometimes contact the mayor's office or probably other commissioners, and they might either say, you know, why don't you abolish the nighttime parking ban? And I think we all know why we have the nighttime parking ban, but we also have some residents who buy parking passes, and they say that they can't find a spot. Sometimes people simply try to get out of a ticket by saying that they can't find a spot, or I've had people tell me they're afraid to walk home, things like that. But something that might be helpful is for us to look at the number of parking permit stickers that we sell, you know, in any given month or any given period, and then maybe compare that to the number of parking spaces that we actually have available for the people who are using those stickers. Is that where you're going?
I think that's where I'm going. I want to make sure that, you know, the people that I've talked to have said they have purchased a parking permit and they, the number of spots that are available in the lots, they understand they're supposed to park in, that there's nothing, they can't find a space, and they have to pay for parking somewhere else, so it's, they're essentially paying for parking twice, and, or they get a ticket, which is, again, they're paying for parking again. So, I just want to help make sure that people aren't paying for parking twice. I'm sympathetic, and then I'm also wanting to make sure that people aren't paying, aren't parking too far away from their houses. So, I think we all have heard from folks that have struggled with this, especially if they're renting.
I think you've hit it on the, on the head. There was a time when we'd not purchase stickers regularly, right? I never personally couldn't find a parking space, and I never personally, you know, felt afraid to walk home, even if I did have to park a couple of blocks away.
Yeah.
But I have heard people express that concern, so maybe it's something that we can look at.
Yeah. And I've asked residents to also contact me directly with specific examples so we can get to the bottom of it, too. So, anyway, just when I saw this, it just made sense to bring it up.
Perfectly reasonable.
And I'm causing lots of disruption tonight, so I'll stop. Anyway, sorry. It's only my third meeting. You got four more years.
All right.
Okay.
Disruptive food tonight.
Sorry. All right, I'm done.
Okay. Any comment on this end of being a gallery? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxam?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanor Goven?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
This is ordinance O-26-23.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, Commissioners, next item is an ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the acceptance of a five-year lease contract with ChargePoint for the leasing, installation, and warranty of dual-plug EV charging station within the village of Forest Park. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Vogt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Melanor Goven. Discussion? No discussion?
I'm sorry. I was just going to say that I know Moses has been looking into this for quite a while, and securing the grant was great news. I think EV chargers really put us on the map with our surrounding communities. There aren't a lot of EV charging stations near Forest Park. There's some, you know, in Oak Park River Forest, but specifically in that downtown business district, it's kind of a win-win because when people are charging, they will inevitably be visiting our shops and restaurants and whatnot, so I think it's a great addition to that area, and I also think that, given our commitment to C4 and signing on with that, this is just another way that helps us work towards those goals that we have agreed to with our surrounding C4 communities to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 45% by 2030, so this is just something that's going to help us along that path.
Any further comment? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxam?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanor Goven?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
This is ordinance O-27-23.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, next item is ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the acceptance of a proposal from Lyons Pender Electric Companies for electrical services required to install this EV charging station within the village. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Vogt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Melanor Goven. Discussion? Okay, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxam?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanor Goven?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
This is ordinance O-28-23.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, next item is an ordinance waiving the bid and authorizing the acceptance of a proposal for the concrete work for the installation of the EV charging station. This agreement is by and between the village and Robert R. Andreas &amp; Sons. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Vogt. Is there a second?
Second it.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Melanor Goven. Discussion? Okay, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxam?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanor Goven?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
This is ordinance O-29-23.
All right, Commissioners, next item is a motion to authorize the village administrator to execute an engagement agreement with a law firm regarding proposed litigation discussed in closed session on June 12, 2023. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Maxam. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Melanor Goven. Since this was a closed session, hopefully there'll be no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxam?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Melanor Goven?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye.
All right. Commissioners, next item is a motion to approve the Kiwanis Club request to conduct Peanut Day's fundraiser September 14 through 17, 2023. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Melon Rogovan. Is there a second?
I'll second.
How about a joint second between Commissioners Vogt and Maxim? Sounds like you listen to me. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Melon Rogovan.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye.
Okay. Commissioners, last item under new businesses, motion to approve the historical society of Forest Park request for a banner and raffle during the month of June and July of this year. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Vogt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Melon Rogovan. Discussion? Okay, there's no discussion, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Melon Rogovan.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioners, that concludes our new business for tonight. We are at the administrative room. Moses?
A lot of business got taken care of tonight, so thank you, council, for that. I want to extend another staff thank you. I said this before at a past meeting, but I want to touch upon it again because, you know, I'll hear questions when I'm leaving Village Hall and it's before 1:00, and our clerk's window is closed. Our clerk's office is not open until 1:00. We're open between 1:00 and 5:00. So first off, you know, I need to extend my many thanks and appreciation to our clerk, to our clerk staff, to our finance staff, mayor's office for doing double duty. We're down a couple of personnel right now. The window is closed, yet the staff is still here. So staff still comes in in the morning at 8:00, doing their duties, answering the phone. So they're, they're busy, and the clerk's office is closed to walk in traffic because there's a lot going on while doing double duty without, you know, while in the middle of that, you know, having to assist people who come into Village Hall. So that's why that clerk's office opens between 1:00 and 5:00. You know, staff is working hard, doing double duty, but we need to put a pause on when that window is open to accommodate the workload right now. So I know there's been some questions that I did talk to residents when they did walk into Village Hall, not knowing that it was closing until 1:00. So I just want to explain that's, that's why it's closed. You know, at the same time, you know, we use this as a learning process. You know, what can we learn from this in terms of process and how people interact with Village Hall? How do our online systems work? Does that accommodate everyone's needs? Is there bumps in the road that, you know, we, we look at things every day, but, you know, I use the metaphor a lot, I'm not seeing what I'm looking at. So, you know, during this time, you know, hopefully, you know, we can change, you know, kind of what the norm is for coming to do business at Village Hall, maybe utilizing our online resources. So we'll stress that a lot. And, you know, hopefully during this time, if, if someone cannot come in during the normal hours within the morning when they're used to, converting into online interaction with our staff. Obviously, you know, we, we love seeing our residents, we love seeing our community. We, we miss you, we don't see you in the morning, but I just kind of wanted to throw that out there of why we're, we're closed. But, you know, at the same time, you know, just use this as a learning opportunity to, you know, if you're not utilizing our online resources and conducting business online where possible, now's a good time to, to make that switch. So again, thank you, staff, for, for working hard, and that's my sole report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Moses. Okay, Commissioner report, Commissioner Maxim.
Really quick, we're going to be holding a budget meeting second week in July, but we haven't set a date or time yet, but that will be open to the public. I did a couple cool things this week. I went to For Our Pan Safety Month barbecue and the Pride event, which I won't talk about because I think the mayor probably will, but it was fantastic, and I want to thank Eric Crumry from Plate Against Sports for organizing that. And then just a quick shout out for Forest Park Arts Alliance. They're doing stoop sessions tomorrow at 7:00 at 925 Marengo, which is my block, and it's a really great block, so it's right across the street from my house. Everyone should go. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxim. Commissioner Nero.
Yes, sir. We heard a couple of good presentations here this evening. The, the first one, Purely Meets, you know, this is something near dear to me. I think from a village standpoint, you hear us talk about often how we strive to be easy to do business with, right? Purely Meets, as you heard tonight, is a very good business, good company with a great product. It's always nice to be able to support that notion of making Forest Park easy to do business with, so the 6B designation would be something certainly that I would be behind. And then lastly, Mr. Upstart, thank you for your presentation. I do have some questions for you. I'll reserve them. I know I wanted to get an opportunity to reach out and spend some time with you and maybe go do a little back and forth with some Q and As. So maybe if you have some time after the council meeting, you stuck around, so maybe we can nail down a date this week. That would be great, and thank you for your presentation this evening as well. End of report, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Nero. Commissioner Melon Rogovan.
Yes. I had a very good two weeks since the last commission meeting, council meeting. Just to give a couple of highlights, I had a meeting with Moses and our engineer and Sal and the folks to talk about our infrastructure plan, to do some planning in anticipation of the budget for the next three years for our infrastructure, and had a traffic and safety committee meeting. I also, I won't steal Jessica's thunder, but I'll talk about just briefly, I joined Commissioner Vogt and some other folks here at the Greentown meeting at Triton College, where we talked about, extended meetings about with C4 and some other local area villages and organizations focusing on sustainability and questions regarding infrastructure. I attended some really wonderful presentations and met planners talking about safe streets and water usage and composting, and it was really motivating. I worked with Commissioner Nero on our, on our flagpole, and we started a GoFundMe and also looked at other possible avenues for fundraising for our flagpole. The GoFundMe has $1,500, and many thanks to the American Legion. We have another $500, and we're going to be planning a fundraiser for the rest of the funds. So we anticipate being able to plant the flagpole in the near future. Appreciate the opportunity to collaborate across our council and in the community after really getting feedback from the community itself about wanting to plant the flagpole and doing that, and then having such great feedback and response from the community. So that's wonderful. I did also attend lots of community events, as Maria talked about, Commissioner Maxim talked about the Pride Fest, and German Fest was wonderful. Most importantly, attended the Black Fire Brigade fifth anniversary. That's a, that's an organization in, on the southwest side of Chicago. They train and prepare black youths for emergency, the, becoming emergency management personnel, both fire and EMTs. And I have supported that organization for a number of years and was glad to be there to celebrate their fifth anniversary, talked to the founders and the directors of the organization, and talked to them about our need for personnel here in Forest Park, and wanted to support our first responders and wanted to ensure the pipeline of first responders for us in Forest Park and surrounding communities. So they're very excited that surrounding communities far away from the Black Fire Brigade's home know about what they're doing, and we're excited to make that connection. So I was glad to be there representing Forest Park. Lots of other things going on, but I was very pleased to represent Forest Park and be out in the community and talking about safe streets and working on behalf of residents this past two weeks.
Thank you, Commissioner Melon Rogovan. Commissioner Vogt.
So we didn't get to address this earlier, so I just wanted to thank the concerned and caring citizens for their presentation today. You offered great insight and feedback pertaining to that final report. I want to thank also the Altenheim Committee volunteers and for their time throughout this process and for y'all always showing up and staying engaged in the process. You know, you offered some really interesting insights, including sort of the disparity in what was listed in the written word in the attached drawings, and you also talked about the National Park Survey, which, you know, a lot of this stuff, had the committee had an opportunity to hear your feedback before they drafted their final report, I think it would have been really helpful, and we could have avoided some of that. I know that the committee never received a National Park Service report, even though that was pretty substantial, and I know that's not on the website. So, you know, to, to identify those things before the final report was submitted, I think would be helpful, and I think you've set a great example of how valuable that kind of interaction is. So I really want to thank you for taking the time to, to come here and share that with us. I, I look forward to the village, because the onus is now on us because the AAC has closed and that report is final. But so the onus is on us now to figure out soliciting feedback. Hopefully, we will invite more people to share their input, like, like you've done so tonight, so that we can get a better idea of how the community feels about it and that we make a meaningful attempt to engage the public as we move forward. And then I have a few things that I'll try to get through quickly. You did mention that the Greentown Climate and Equity Event this past Thursday. It was an all-day event with a lot of panel discussions. It opened with a presentation about C4, which we, we've signed on to, and how that's bringing communities together to combat climate change and achieve equity. And there was a keynote address from Dr. Tony Reims, Deputy Director of Energy Justice at the U.S. Department of Energy. So it was, it was a really inspiring, informative event with highly qualified panelists and thought-provoking conversations. So I really enjoyed that, and it was great to see Commissioner Melon Rogovan there. We do have free wood chips. I think there's still some available. Yes, okay. Public Works is offering those. They are at the south end of the Altenheim, just north of the CTA lot. First come, first served, so folks are welcome to go take those. The single-use foodware ordinance will go into effect on July 1st. So that's just a reminder to get into the habit of requesting single-use foodware when you are ordering delivery or takeout. And I know our Sustainability Commission is, is working on some outreach, and we've been reaching out to businesses just to remind them that, that that is happening, and we'll be providing some signage for them to place in the window or at their counter. That leads into Plastic Free July, if anyone wants to look into that, plasticfreejuly.org. And then also, we're going to continue with Front Yard Fridays. So we're inviting folks to step out into their front yards and pick up. Just that little bit can really be helpful, especially going into the weekend when Public Works is not around to do their seemingly endless task of picking up trash throughout town, and maybe you'll meet some neighbors. So we invite everyone to continue to partake in that. I'd also like to remind folks who've had a tree recently planted in their parkway to make sure they're filling their green bags, because with the drought, it's really important to make sure that those guys get enough water. And then I am part of a subcommittee of the C4. We're studying green landscape technologies, and we're working to create educational information and outreach to share with fellow municipalities, residents, and landscaping companies and contractors. So I'm inviting anyone that may hire a landscaper or company to share their information with us. We don't have a comprehensive database of everyone that serves our community, so we're inviting anyone to send that. You can send it to me, or in our newsletter, there is a link to C4 Contact that also you can send that information to. And then lastly, the Pride Block was a lot of fun, and I want to thank the businesses, residents, and organizations that sponsored the event. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Vogt. Commissioners, we, we did have a lot going on in the village in the last, you know, couple of weeks. You know, a couple of weekends ago, we had our annual Juneteenth family pool party, and that kind of kicked off the season. And then this year, we saw Newtown's adopt Juneteenth. Traditions River Forest had a really nice flag raising that included all their first responders, all their educational institutions. Broadview had their second annual fireworks event recognized in Juneteenth, and brought, that brought out leaders from around the region. Speaker Welch had a huge event on, on Monday, June 19th. That included Senator Dick Durbin and about, I think, five of the state's constitutional officers, in addition to a number of area legislators, not just from the Proviso area, but, you know, the speaker has a pretty loud megaphone. And then one of our neighboring communities, Westchester, has adopted the Juneteenth holiday. They had their first annual flag raising, and that brought together the mayors. The new mayor of Westchester participated, Greg Rebel, and again, community leaders from throughout Proviso. So it's nice to see this tradition catch on, but then they, they generally kind of cribbed it back to Forest Park in the longstanding tradition we had here. And then, of course, last weekend, we had German Fest, and we also had the Pride Festival. I had the opportunity to give an opening address or welcome at German Fest, and I received a call earlier in the week from one of our countywide elected officials, and this person said, you know, Rory, I was driving through Forest Park, and I saw a banner advertising Juneteenth, I saw a banner advertising German Festival, and then I see all these rainbow banners, you know, what are you all doing in Forest Park? I call it being responsive. We're giving the people what they want. Representation matters. And then in, in terms of the Pride Event, that was really driven by market forces, mainly by the businesses, but, you know, staff and commissioners certainly chipped in. Commissioner Maxim spent some of her time marketing the event and working with the businesses. Rachel Entler from Village Hall was quite involved. Public Works, as always, provided the infrastructure. I think we needed more chairs this year than last year. I mean, it was just packed. We had our neighbors from River Forest, we had our neighbors from Oak Park, several surrounding communities, a number of, we had a majority of our school board there, certainly, at least one member from District 209. And so hopefully, we had a village clerk here. I'm not sure if she was clearing her throat for strategic reasons, but she certainly was there, Director Dyluski. So we got a lot of village support, in all seriousness, and it was a great positive energy. And I think, you know, this spirit of inclusiveness is important to marketing the village last week. Commissioner Nero talked about robust home sales and the demand and, and the dollar value that people are getting for their, their homes. People kind of want to be sometimes in a diverse area, whether it's confident that, where they're confident that they're going to be safe, Phil, safe, Ken, so pat yourselves on the back, fellas. Pat yourselves on the back, fellas. Call and response, right? Okay, so having said all this, I'm going to move into just wishing everyone will join us for the July 4th celebrations in Forest Park. The Park District always has a, a nice event for us. We provide security, and let's really, really hope that this year's 4th of July goes off without any, any incidents that jeopardize public safety. We are still looking for volunteers for the village's soon-to-be revamped Diversity Commission. If you know someone who might want to participate, a few people have sent applications to the mayor's office, and we're looking at those, but we want to have a few more before we reengage this committee. And then we're also looking to revamp our youth commission. We have a number of teenagers in the village. You know, when they, when they get 13, you're aged out of the community center, you're aged out of a lot of programs, but not everyone between 13 and 17 is ready to work. between 13 and 17 is ready to work, and so we have to find a meaningful way to harness the energy and enthusiasm of this young group. And so that's part of the reason why we want to bring back the Youth Commission. So having said that, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
As Sir Nero will make the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Nero. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Maxim. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxim?
Aye.
Commissioner Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Mellon-Govin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye. We stand adjourned.